Wednesday, July 3rd, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Winarski, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kautowski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Again, Mr. President, I'd ask that we remember those in our community that we go before forth in this meeting that are less fortunate than we are, both locally as well as globally. Remember those who have lost loved ones since we were in these chambers. And we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information and the courage to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval minutes from the city council meeting of Wednesday, June 19th, 2019, and bills for payment on June 28th and July 5th, 2019. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kautowski, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski.
Do we have anybody here this morning for a repository sale? Anybody here this morning for a repository sale? Hearing none, move on to citizens to be heard.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Jason Brendel, 4131 McClellan Avenue, Erie, PA, 16510. First and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out to the Pride Fest this past weekend. We had, I think, close to 3,000 lovers, dreamers, and amazing people just being themselves. It was a beautiful day in the city of Erie. Thank you for coming out to Pride Fest. The reason why I'm here is because Kathy Schoff, Erie City Councilwoman, lives in my neighborhood, and she's driven by this so many times, and I've jogged by this so many times. Northview Heights Apartment Complex on the, on their property have not completed the sidewalk from, sidewalk up from McClellan all the way up to their entrance on their property. So people that are ADA compliant, that have, you know, wheelchairs or that are disabled cannot walk on the grass. And then there is the Kohler Building, there's the Kohler Property that still does not have sidewalks. And there's the Garden Heights Baptist Church in the front, their sidewalk is right next to the street. And then I noticed on the paving and the new milling for McClellan Avenue and East 44th and McClellan Avenue, that part from East Grand View down to 43rd and McClellan has no sidewalks. And the Garden Heights Baptist Church is a polling location in the 5th Ward, 19th Precinct. So people that are, you know, that are handicapped cannot go down McClellan or across 44th or 43rd. I know I've sent this into the Citizen Response Center, I've gotten feedback from them, you know, they've done their work, but I want to make sure that for the general elections in upcoming, 2020, because I know there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be coming out to vote for that, that we have a safe way for citizens to walk across the Northview Heights Apartments Complex, to walk across the Kohler Property, to make sure that we have sidewalks, to make sure that we have, you know, the city of Erie complete. It's not complete, that's one. The second is, I'm here to present a thank you to Erie City Councilwoman Kathy Schoff, the Fire Department, Special Events, and Fire Department Local 293, with these flags. These flags are very precious. They've either been in front of VFW posts, America Legions in the city of Erie, or they have been in front of families' homes that have been condemned, but veterans have lived there. And I'm giving this to the city of Erie, the Fire Department, and also each city council person, because these mean what we're doing tomorrow. Tomorrow, we're celebrating the 243rd birthday of our nation. And when you hold these flags with pride, and when you hold these flags and you present them and you have them, you will understand what it means when I asked for people to show up for the Flag Day event in June. You know, tonight, we're going to be celebrating our independence with lights over Lake Erie, and I'd like to say, thank Joe Schumberg and Mercyhurst University for putting that wonderful display of red, white, and blue together. But I'm here to remind you that the bicentennial tower was lit in sponsorship with the Erie County Chaplain's National Flag Foundation and Northwest Pennsylvania Area Labor Federation. We made that happen, and we are happy that we are working together to celebrate the nation's birthday and why we are here together. So I'm just going to yield my time to give this to Renee and each city council representative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Flag Day, thank you. Honored councilman, gentle ladies, administration, Renee. A couple of things this morning. I wanted first to thank you for the courage of the resolution that you put out regarding the Erie Coke Plant. Now we see what the benefit of supporting the DEP is. They too have taken a courageous move to do their job, to bring an injunction against the Coke Plant. It gives none of us any happiness that this happened, but don't let the Coke Plant fool you. The last nine years, they've had every opportunity to do the right thing to come within compliance. They shouldn't be shocked. This is a move that they should have expected, and we should all support the DEP in order to have them do their job, or the Coke Plant to do the right thing. Second of all, now that LERTA has been approved by all the bodies, and now that we have an investment community fund, let's do the best we can with that fund. Seems to be it's a little meager, seems to be it's a little bit slight on funding. Please consider some ideas. Don't rush into approving it if you can help it. Try to make it robust, try to make it something we can all be proud of. Idea I thought of, and I don't know what the law stipulates, but I know we're collecting some application fees. Perhaps we can have those companies reapply every year and pay a fee every year that would, to help bolster that fund, something, I don't know. You guys are creative folk, and maybe there's something that you can do to, to do something to help that out, because it's, right now, it's, seems to be a little underfunded. Also, the newspaper says it's to take care of code enforcement issues or housing issues. I think the original intent, as I heard spoken of, was perhaps even a wider scope, maybe workforce development help, maybe, you know, pay some tuition for people, get some, some training, and other things, just don't limit it. Thirdly, you will see us continue, since there's no CBA wording in any of the LERTA. Okay, we're going to come back at it and hope that council continue considering ordinance that brings some help, wage help, minority hire help, local hire help, we need those things. Also, we have a Poor People's Campaign March coming up. I gave Rose some information. Rose, if you could distribute that to all the councilmen.
My dear.
Thank you very much. This is important. Whether you believe in one or none or all, please come out and support the community. This is important. We need hope, we need courage for our, the members of our disenfranchised community and all the community. And lastly, I want to mention that there's an atrocity occurring down on the border of our country. There's actions that are being taken that are inexcusable. I think council would do well to put forth a resolution that would address this and say, look, not in our country, this is not the way we, we behave. In a community that is hoping to become a designated welcoming community, I think we need to speak out on that issue. I would hope you'd consider something and craft something. And lastly, you should remember that none of us are free until we're all free, and it's a paraphrase, and Liz would probably know the quote from the person. But please remember that until each and every one of us have reached equality, none of us are free, none of us have justice. Thank you.
My name is Freda Teffer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street. I'm a homeowner, taxpayer, and a certified orientation and mobility specialist. I have a slightly different feeling about the Community Reinvestment Fund. I was here at the last city council meeting, and this was inserted at the, after the public comment period, so we didn't have a chance to comment. And after the vote, because people, people did comment on the potential of the fund, but we didn't know about some of the particulars. And at the end of the discussion, Solicitor Betts explained that the fund could not collect more than $100 from each business because that had to reflect the cost of, of the application process, which to me is kind of amazing after having sat through two presentations by the early intervention team about the dire straits the city's in financially, much of it due to personnel costs. The city has lots of things that they are not covering the costs of with, with things that they could be getting paid for. So here we have businesses applying for this permit, and we've been told that it costs about $100 to process that, and yet we're rechanneled that money into a community reinvestment fund. So the impact, in fact, is that citizens are either subsidizing that $100 into the community reinvestment fund because we, we are not getting paid for the staff time, or, or the staff is not doing something else that they would have been doing with that time. If, we should be recouping the cost of doing business in the city. We shouldn't be taking that money and doing something else with it. I also heard either in person here and listening to the news conference and in person at the Disability Roundtable, I heard the mayor describe this fund three different times. And most, two out of three times, he talked about it was designed for low-income residents to deal with bringing their homes up to code or making improvements or whatever. But at the Disability Roundtable, he talked about how Kathy Wyrazik was going to be kind of in charge of the fund, and there will be a committee. And then he got kind of really enthusiastic, and he said, well, we could even use it to knock down a whole block full of blighted housing and build a park. And I thought, wait a minute, that's not what he said the other two times. So I'm really concerned, what the heck is this community reinvestment fund? Who's going to decide? And why are we not collecting the fees for the application costs? That's what the fee should go for. I hear Curtis over and over again talk about how we should have a fee for outdoor dining. It's a very similar thing. You have on, on the agenda a couple of easements for Gannon and Warner Theater. I hope that those projects ensure that during the construction that there is adequate safe pedestrian access with detectable notification, and it ensures that people using mobility devices as well as visually impaired pedestrians have a reasonable way to travel around downtown. I want to thank Public Works for doing a somewhat better job of administering the curb cut contracts. I saw two different projects in my neighborhood, and one of them, I see the little bar across the barricades, not just the flagging, which is a welcome improvement, and they only did one corner at a time, that's 24th and Haybarger, but only a block away, they had all four corners encumbered at the same time. That means nobody can, nobody using a mobility device has a way of getting by there. That should not be done that way. So I want to wish you all a happy 4th of July, but, oh, and I also want to mention, I drive by Waving Park all the time, and all of the businesses across the street from the park have a nice free parking area. That's another way the city could recoup funds. Why are they getting to park there for free when other businesses have to provide parking for their employees, or people park on street or whatever? Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Have any other citizens to be heard? Good morning.
Well, my address is 546 West 3rd Street, I'm Rhonda Pearson, and the addresses are 538 and 1/2 West 3rd Street and 552 West 3rd Street. They're badly cracked up, and I'm afraid when I'm riding up and down, then I'm going to fall over. They need to be looked at.
Rhonda, what were, Rhonda, what were those addresses again? You said sort of sidewalk, right?
538 and 1/2 West 3rd Street and 5, 52 West 3rd Street.
You said the sidewalks are almost unpassable, is that?
They're cracked up.
Okay. Is there anything else, ma'am? Thank you very much. Is there any other citizen be heard this morning? Any other citizens to be heard? Forward with the agenda.
Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 16110, official ordinance number 482019, an ordinance creating a community reinvestment fund appropriating money for the fund and directing certain application fees to deposit into said fund. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, that council file ordinance bill number 16110, and now known as official file ordinance number 482019, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I'm very much in favor of, of this action. I do, just over time, you know, there's always something that comes up, there's always some ways as we continue to kind of mull over these things, we see where there could be improvements, you know, and enhancements, and so I'm not wanting to shift or change anything at this moment, but just in reading more clearly and having some more thought, I think that this fund is a great opportunity for us to do some significant work. I think one thing to someone, I think it was Freda, Ms. Teffer, excuse me, her comment, which I agreed with, is that we need to have a little more clarity, maybe direction, on exactly how and what we want to use the fund for. The initial startup, the initial ideas around generating revenue into the fund and bringing funds into this particular community reinvestment fund, I think, has us looking at a low end or, or low amount of money. I think if we're creative, that we could do some great things with this fund if we, but we also have to have a focus, creativity around it, because if we're not going to generate a lot, a lot, you know, hundreds and hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars, we can't water down what we do to with the fund, or it won't be as effective as it could be. Another thing, as I was looking at it, and I do know that, okay, I do know that the conversation of the fund and the idea of the fund, if I remember correctly, came up through the LERTA discussion and LERTA negotiations and LERTA process, and I think that, but I, but I think that if this fund is, is successful as it could be, I think it should be separate from LERTA, even though maybe, you know, the application fees from LERTA still continue to, to be a funding source for it, because if LERTA goes away in 10 years, or if LERTA goes away in five years because we don't deem it as effective, I don't think the need for a community reinvestment fund goes away. So, so that's just something I want to put out there. I know it's, that language is in the current ordinance, as we've been told and we know, we can change things as we need to, or as we see best in relation to ordinances and things that we pass in these chambers. So those are a couple of ideas or a couple of thoughts that are, are in my mind around this reinvestment fund. We have to find some ways to get more money into it, and I'll be honest with you, the, in relation to the LERTA ordinance, you know, the $100 and $25 fee or whatever, just hasn't been sitting well with me, excuse me, since we passed it. I, I understand the language around revenue neutral, I, I'd like to see if that's respectfully true, or what angle or what perspective that statement came from, that we can't generate revenue from that, because if that's the case, we can't put it in the fund. It has to be revenue neutral because it has to go towards taking care of the fund or the staff time. I think Fred had mentioned the same thing. So that makes me, causes concern for me as well. So maybe that was just a general statement, but if that's a literal legal statement that has to be revenue neutral, I don't even know that we could utilize said application fee for something that's not direct staff time. So again, there's some more pieces to the puzzle. I'm going to, again, vote in favor of, because I believe in what this could be, but I think there's also some more work that needs to be done, and I would hope that the administration would allow council to be in all of the negotiation and all of the final formatting of this process of creating this fund and what it's going to look like. And I would, I would love for council to be somehow a part of the approval process for groups or funds or, or individuals who want to receive from this fund. I, I would, I would think that would be a great component of it as well. So I, I know that was a little long, but I probably won't say much else today, believe it or not. But, so those are my concerns, those are my concerns and my interests, and I will be very vocal around those things, continuing and moving forward, asking questions and bringing up suggestions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Kautowski, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City council pass official file ordinance number 482019, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 16109, ordinance number 472019, I guess those two were out of order. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $139,115 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, 2019 insurance fraud prevention authority. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that council file ordinance bill number 16109, and now known as official file ordinance number 472019, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kautowski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City council pass official file ordinance number 472019, finally by a seven, nay zero. Do you want me to go on with the first reading, or do you want to break for the public hearing, Mr. President?
We'll break for the public hearing. Okay.
Pursuant to the provisions of zoning ordinance number 80-2005 and appropriate legal advertising, city council will hold a public hearing at approximately 9:30 a.m., July 3rd, 2019, in city council chambers. Consider a request for waterfront conditional use submitted by Tim Hoover for construction of a 30 by 42 attached garage located at 324 East 2nd Street.
Is Mr. Hoover here this morning? If you would, please step forward and...
Good morning. I guess more or less state your claim and... Okay. Yes, my wife and I sold our house and, out in the country, and we went through the process with planning nonconditional, and we're modeling a house down on 324 East 2nd, and we're doing a garage attached to it. We have a double lot, it's quite large and everything, and I, I had, we went through the planning committee, they have the pictures and everything, so we're waiting to see if we get our garage, if we continue on.
Okay. Very good. For one, thanks for coming back to the city.
Okay.
Or moving into the city. Secondly, we'll move forward with this public hearing to see if anybody is here to speak in favor of this two-car attachment on East 2nd Street, was that?
Yeah, like 2nd and Turbin.
Okay. Anybody here to speak in favor? Anybody here to speak against it?
If anyone wants to speak in favor, I'd like to say, one thing is that it's to be attached to that garage on East 2nd Street, and just like the past, you know, the fact that we have a home place that's built in the end, and it does go to the same area where the kids live, and it's like another way it was told, and it's going to not get to the city of Erie, that you can't see him, and Scott and I rises have worked together to put up an industrial bridge across the bayfront, so his family can come down and get out of family gathering, they can go straight down 2nd Street and walk across the new industrial bridge, I just wanted to say that, because I think, you know, some are coming into Erie, from the back of Erie, maybe industrial bridge, and it's going to go down to the dock, and go to Seaboard.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor? Anybody speak opposed to this addition? Anybody opposed? Thank you, I guess now we'll listen to Mr. Jake. If you would, please state the city's intention.
Thank you. Good morning. As Mr. Hoover mentioned, they've gone through the conditional use review and a now approval process, hopefully. The Design Review Committee met May 1st, Mr. Hoover was present, reviewed the, the proposed construction of the garage, brought samples of the materials, the actual design materials, that's, that's really what the Design Review Committee looks at, is, is what's this really going to look like, what's it, what's it feel like? It is being designed just as the, as the house is, same materials as the house which they recently remodeled. So the Design Review Committee recommended approval of the design, they based that on Section 306 of the ordinance as far as waterfront design principles. So it passed muster with the Design Review Committee, then went forward to the May 21st Planning Commission meeting, and essentially, you know, a lot of the same information was shared to the Planning Commission. There really weren't any other further questions from the Planning Commission. I had indicated that, you know, in addition to the Design Review Committee recommendation to approve the design, that there were no zoning related issues, that all of the zoning requirements were met as far as lot coverage, setbacks for the build, the proposed building, things of that nature. Based on that, the Planning Commission at that May 21st meeting, they voted unanimously, unanimously to recommend that council approve the proposed garage, based their approval or their recommendation on the Design Review Committee approval. It really is an appropriate permitted accessory use for the property, and all of the other zoning requirements being met, so that was what their approval or the recommendation for approval was based on.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of quick questions. So they met all the zoning requirement issues. If they had not, and they had to go in front of the zoning hearing board or whatever that process would be, is there a, what's the fee that they would have had to pay for that?
For the zoning hearing board?
Yes.
The application fee is $300.
Is there any fee to go in front of the planning commission or design review?
With conditional use?
Yes.
Yes.
What is that fee?
That's $500.
And just in relation to this family, thank you for investing. Some people describe that area as the worst census tract in the state of Pennsylvania. But I think you, others, like, you know, your insurance, for example, see it as a high, high opportunity area. So thank you for reinvesting and investing in the city on the east side. We don't often see that at that level, so thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you.
For the public hearing, Rose, naturally, we don't vote on any of this today.
Okay.
That closes our public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, ordinances for first reading. Council file 16111, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $3,019, $610 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of GLG 2017 Green Light Go Program, signal upgrade East 10th Street and Holland Street. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarski, that council file ordinance number 16111, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mrs. Kotowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16111 by a seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council file 16112, an ordinance appropriated the sum of $8,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue from Star Athletic Club for the Bureau of Fire of the City of Erie. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, the council file ordinance number 16112, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16112 by a seven, nay zero, That'll take us to new business, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. General.
Let me pass the, excuse me, move the balance of the agenda.
I will second it.
Are there any separations, council?
No separations? All right, moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mrs. Kotowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Ms. Allen?
All right, I'll try and keep it short. I attended both the People's Supper and also Bishop Brock's summit, and I think it's really interesting. The People's Supper was really amazing. A lot of good project ideas came out of there. I really appreciate the language that talks about being intentional in terms of making the city equitable. I wanted to point out, though, that I'm also reading something, Cincinnati's Over the Rhine: A Private-Led Model for Revitalizing Urban Neighborhoods by Bruce Katz, Karen Black, and Luis Narini. And it talks about how Cincinnati's 3CDC, which stands for Cincinnati Center City Development Corporation, it's an assessment of how its successes and also some of its challenges in revitalizing that neighborhood in Cincinnati. And as everyone knows, this is the model that Erie used for the EDDC. One of the things I found interesting is that the 3CDC considers the city its partner in its redevelopment efforts, and it makes sure that the mayor, the city manager, and city council are, have a say over the projects that 3CDC undertakes. We do not have that model in Erie, and I'm wondering why EDDC skipped over that part of the Cincinnati model. This particular paper mentions that Erie has followed the Cincinnati model. However, EDDC did not follow everything that Cincinnati did. One of the other things that 3CDC, 3C, DC, one of its guiding principles is historic preservation. And as we know, EDDC is aiming to take down the former Greyhound bus station and also the building next to that. So I just think it's imperative that members of the public and that city council and that the city administration keep an eye on what's going on with EDDC and ask how this model was created, and city council and the mayor's office were left out of any kind of ability to approve what EDDC is doing. At the Eagle's Nest, somebody from the EDDC talked about the plans for the Perry Square Building and said they want to cultivate the next generation of food and beverage workers and mentioned that one of the reasons this is going to require a lot of investment is because it costs $100,000 to $500,000 to add a commercial kitchen, which actually is one of the reasons why the businesses that are being displaced from there are having difficulty figuring out where they're going to be going. So there's just, it was very ironic to hear EDDC talk about the enormous cost for a commercial kitchen when there are three food businesses that are going to be displaced. I ate at Kao Tai the other night, and they don't know where they're going to be going. So as we move forward with all this rah 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 about opportunity zones, I think it's really important that questions and that due diligence continue to be done. There's a story in the paper today about the projects that are being pitched. Erie's invest-